A move that we approve.
We've been seconded, seconded until May 27th. Any discussion? Do you want to discuss that, Toby? You want to read them? Are you ready?
I am.
Do you want to vote on it? Did you want to discuss them?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor except in minutes. Say aye. Aye. Vote. Communication can comment on it. No? Right? Long unfinished business, construction of Henwood Hill, discuss.
In your packet, you have some other pricing that you requested. These are not bids, these are estimates, so. We have like a discrepancy on the guardrails, so I gave you prices on both. Traffic lights, I did just a two-month rental, if it was more, it's the same, so it didn't matter. Two-month rental will probably be more than a four-month rental. I did get a letter from Jeff Nugent, who is our Wyndham Regional person, and our grant to aid monies as long as it's working towards improvements for Act 64, we're good to go, so that's intact. Mirrors, the 36 and the 48-inch are with one post, and Chuck and I were just talking just before this meeting, and possibly we're going to need two posts, so you'd have to add $100 to both of those prices, because I don't think one post would be secure enough. Engineer pricing, I asked for three mid-sized companies and got two prices. You can see the ranges of that, it would be so that would be under $30,000 for Henwood Hill.
Okay. So. It seems pretty clear, I guess, that. Or, I think it's clear that this year we'll only have 37.5. It'll go at this tax rate and then we'll have this 10.
We could be plugging whatever our crew wants to do.
Oh, and then any kind of.
Whatever, we're in there, we really didn't separate money up. We assumed we were going to spend some money with our own crew doing it, so. But out of pocket, it'd be 37 if we budgeted it, if the crew could do some of the work. But speaking of, I talked to a couple of the contractors. The question was, the people that own the lane and brought the fact that they're willing to cut the tree. The question was, why don't we just cut all the trees in the corners completely? Have contractors just dig it back, put a little bit of retaining wall. The people gave the permission to take all the trees. And then you wouldn't be screwing with the road, you just accidentally leave the road, put a guy right there and just cut that whole corner down. There's a lot of nice sand and fill, and we're still worth money, is what I'm thinking. If we hit ledge, we're on the event, that's as far as we can go, and we need to retain it all.
The concerns that all the people, the engineers that we've talked to, is that if you take the trees, you're loosening that soil.
Take the whole bank, yeah, take the whole bank, that's what I'm saying. You would actually take the trees, cut the bank, and you'd have to go get the permission to go in their land. There's a lot, if it's what we think it is, a lot of fill, you take that whole corner, cut all the trees and just cut it back, you're not really then doing much with the road other than putting drains, because you leave the road, you're not going to the right-hand side. And that was all night sand and fill, if the sand is, we're paying to go get it, if we can get some, put a bit of guys out of it, it would be up to the owner allowing us to go back. You see what I'm saying? We'd have to discuss it with them, but they didn't bring up immediately.
So you're just going to do the corner? And then.
I'm only, I'm only one person, I want to bring that up.
I'm just trying to get your perspective on this.
That road's been like that for years, the corner's bad, got to fix the corner. But if we could go in there and make a big carving, so now the corner is actually truly wide, it gives you an area that you can even actually go around somebody, and it's not dangerous anymore. And then you're not touching the rest of the road. But when we're looking at it, we're going like, hey, how do we keep those trees from sliding down the bank? Only other way is give up and have somebody come in and cut off the trees. We would, like I said, we would be probably approaching more of their land, we would have to have their permission file. They did say to us at the town meeting that they were willing to allow us to go in there. And that was an option that a couple of contractors came up to me, being the fact that the worst case is you hit ledge, and at that point you're stopped, and now you've got a retainer wall. And then the other way is all of a sudden, if you get to a point, you might compromise and put some kind of a retainer wall and hold it back, and you've already cut way back in, took a lot of the fill out. Don't put the fill down over the bank, just actually take it away, and you don't touch the road, you just actually cut that corner down.
Last, we need to ask the engineer for an estimate, well, what was the scope of work that we asked?
The maximum. The maximum, so that we would know the high end of.
Right.
Of the project.
And they'll also tell whether that outside bank is stable?
Yes, then by moving the center of the road, you're automatically leaving that side bank so that it would be stable, yes. And with the stone or barrier that we were talking about.
Right.
On the bigger project, and yes, it would definitely be stable. Is he actually going to link it into the main road the way it is right now?
Yeah, first of all, where is this corner? Was it close two weeks ago?
Yeah.
That was the side corner that's out one.
Yeah.
I just don't know if we can approach, you know, if we can ask if that even possible. You see what I'm saying? If they say no, don't even go any further, if they say yeah, I would like to investigate, what would that cost? Is that feasible?
I thought that was what we talked before.
We talked about not really cutting the trees, only a couple of them trying to take and put a retainer wall.
And how are our bathrooms?
That's a good question, I would think we'd have somebody, but. Away back, if the build is what we think it is, with build, you cut, I mean, here we are buying, we actually, you don't buy it. No, but if it's sand, good sand fill, we could sell it or you would like.
I don't know, I mean, I guess it seems to me the best thing to do is we have 37,000 plus. Is the, is the higher we can meet here. That's what the engineer.
I'm going to lay down a couple of different options.
Yeah.
Engineers, that's all. It could be the engineer comes back with a land order and says, no, it's not a possibility. I just wanted to make sure we. I mean, we all agree, we need to have guardrails, we don't have to touch that side of the road and only cut back.
Right.
And, you know, there's a couple of different options to do.
Right, that's what we. That makes sense, but then we also, while we're ready, because we're willing to do anything else here except what our road crew should do, we need to have some way to make that corner stay. So whether it is.
We would definitely, I would assume we would have to investigate the guardrails and the mirrors, at least. And then maybe we would still meet one more time to see if Chuck could do something, any, on a low scale, to just make it a little more passable for one more year.
What do you know about that?
Could people pop a little on us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe like this.
Yeah, what we find out, what we're still working is that I might even want, you know, what you're thinking.
Right.
We need to figure out, we're still going to rebuild Henwood Hill Road or Dale Road, we're going to address that issue.
Right.
Regular road maintenance, that's a problem that we've discovered.
What I'm thinking, the money that we, the money that we have this year, the money that we have this year, the 37.5, to the assuming go, to the engineering, plus the guardrails, plus the mirrors, as a safety. That, does that make sense?
It would use all the.
That would be all the. Unless the ramping, that would be. Yeah, so do you, so is there any more discussion about that? Does that seem reasonable? Yes.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm taking notes too, but. So we're going to proceed with the guardrail, is that what I heard?
Well, we didn't pass on a motion.
And we have plenty of monies for both of those.
Susan, Susan, this is Alice. Could I interrupt, please? Apparently Nate Stoddard wants to ask a question, and no one is aware of that because there is no computer up.
Can you answer this, please? Oh, Alice, oh, hi, okay, what, is that question again, Alice, please? Can you hear me, Alice?
I can hear you, I have to unmute again. Apparently Nate Stoddard is trying to ask a question, but no one has a computer open that they can see that he is on the Zoom chat.
Can you see that calling?
There's no raised hands.
There are no raised hands?
We don't have hands available. I had to go in and unmute my mic in order to reach you. And I suggested that he try to do that, but apparently he's not having success.
I'm sticking around with the.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
Nate?
Nate's on.
Is he on there? Can you see him? Oh, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Nate? Okay, we can hear you now.
My, my question was, was how do we participate in this meeting if nobody has a means to identify when we want to speak?
Well, I think.
To do.
So there's a way you can raise your hand, right, or no? I'm assuming, that's what we did at the last meeting.
There should be, but I don't see a setting for it.
I do not see that.
I mean, also, they can unmute themselves.
Pardon?
They can unmute themselves at any time. I'm not talking like they're either.
All right, as long as somebody can hear us, I'll just unmute and we'll scream.
He's like, so. Was that your question, and now we can hear you?
Ask me, does he have a question?
Oh, my.
You have another question, Nate?
That was my question, was how do we participate in this meeting if we can't participate? Because nobody has a computer paying attention to the computer.
Yes, there is, Tom, there is, there's a gentleman right there looking at it.
Okay, I'll, I'll just unmute and scream when I want to say something, then.
Okay.
That's how we do it.
I don't think.
That's how we said we have to do it.
Okay.
I don't think you realize that there's somebody watching the computer.
Right, but come on, someone, so someone probably. The point was that you didn't, there was no hand raising, you know, that removed hand for some reason.
But I think what happened, looking here and looking around, none of us have computers, he's questioning, how you guys know I'm raising my hand, because I don't think he sees him.
The back of the. Engineering.
Do we have a scope of work yet? We want to put, get it started on the guardrails and the mirrors. And then we can, we can deal with the retaining wall, how far to go, engineering of it.
My only concern would be that the guardrail could never be in the way, because I could do some work or something. You see what I'm saying? I don't know.
Yep. The only thing we discussed, I had discussed a little, and I have to have a chance to talk to us, but. Before we put the guardrails in, we should remove the burn. Because the guardrails will be over the burn, and once you do that, then you can't. You can't clean it off like you should, so the thing to do is, you know, they would schedule it, I would know the day before, I would know the day before and clean it off just ahead of them, and then would install the barrier.
Why don't, let you and Chuck get together, come back to the scope of time for the summer? Or what would you do?
I've got to have a scope of work before I give you a scope of time. I don't know what we're doing before I go.
Take the burn off, because you come back to tell us what you need to do to get ready.
That's, that's a couple hours.
The guardrails, the mirrors, and the engineering work. Okay? And. We need a motion for that?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
My only question, so what's the difference between the 475 and 600, and what, how far you went with the guardrail?
That's correct, that's the distance.
So is one only going through the corner, and the other one's going around the corner and down the other side, is that what it is?
One is starting up the hill further, towards CCC Road. And both are going around the corner where it's not safe.
So will it, if that is the thought, provide some safety for this summer, while we get the engineering done? Any discussion?
So I'm having my answer because nobody was paying attention to the people that are logged onto the computer. I heard that now Alice got your attention. You guys are really close to me filing a complaint for the Secretary of State's office about the lack of participation ability during town meetings and during the select board meetings. I'm really upset that I was just at home and beginning to participate, until somebody screaming into the computer, so. I understand that, but it's been going on since March. It's time to come up to see with from the rest of the towns in this area urgently. So that's all I'll say about that, that I would like a copy of that letter, or whatever it is from Wyndham Regional, that Russ said he got confirmation that that grant was still available.
Do you have that?
Not tonight, not what I, yeah.
I know that, but I was yelling, I was yelling Susan's name, how to be participating. Fact TV is not responsible for manning doing for us, so, I mean, and then I got muted. And then they texted me on the way and said that Alice got through, she yelled and somebody heard her. But you can't hear on the air, and it's just that. I know you don't like this whole process, I don't either. But there are people that do not feel comfortable participating in group sessions right now. And they have that right to feel that way right now. So we have to accommodate them, or you're limiting participation in this process.
Yes, that's why we brought you to just be.
We're trying to do both, we're not.
I know, but technically it's not working, is what I'm saying.
This gentleman is here, we thought.
I'm not, I'm not complaining about Fact TV at all, I'm not, I really don't, it's not. Other towns are doing it without this issue, I've watched their meetings all the time. So I don't know what's different about us. So I'm done with that, I'll shut up about that, I do want to come in and that other.
I'd like a copy of that, too. And I'll just say, not, not the one at the last county, but the meeting before that, I tried to do the thing, I wasn't able on my computer.
It's difficult, there's no. Okay, any other discussion about Henwood Hill? Kind of know what we're doing at the moment? Discussion about the special town meeting? Anybody have any? Yeah, let me just pass.
Like, you see that many people, you're all. That could be me.
Yeah.
I was, what's going to happen, Russ, I guess we need to figure out how to, how to get something else in the next, exactly, saying we want to form a committee. At the meeting, I had two people come up to me that want to be on that committee, which was nice. One was from Westminster West, and one was from Gageville. Be nice to get a, we need another couple of people, some different parts, from town of Westminster. If we could put something in the Gazette, and I'll get together with Russ with a timeframe, that we could ask for people that would want to volunteer to be on that committee, doing the study of what we're going to do with it. The Northwest Minister Community Council. Which, when does, when does that have to come to the Gazette?
Next week, Wednesday.
I'll get it together, thanks, Russ. I wanted to discuss quickly with the board, because I think you and I, we've talked about meeting with Larry Slayson. And I did talk to Mr. Anthony Savage that owns it. We should go to the attorney's office, I think my concern is that when we draft this agreement, that a couple things, that, being the fact that we do the bore sampleings, we own those bore samples. So the couple scenario would be that, once we do them, unless this state, they turn out to be really good in the re-traffic, we still own, we can negotiate a contract with him. If we get done and we can't negotiate the contract, we would still own those bore samples, and then he would have a right to buy them if he wanted to take them and negotiate with another buyer, only after we decided we couldn't come to an agreement. I just, we never discussed that, I just wanted to discuss that quickly before we went to the attorney. He was agreement on that also, as well. Basically, we would, we would spend the 4,500, and if it came back really good, we would keep pursuing, but. We, we would own those samples, not somebody else. He could, you know, and, but if we get done and we can't come to agreement, he might want to negotiate to buy, buy those from us. In case he was going to sell it to somebody else. And I think that's the terminology, somehow in a timeframe of how long it's going to take, how long he would have to put it on hold, and a few other things like that.
Susan?
I think if we could schedule a meeting with Larry Slayson and discuss what we want, I would say you and I could do that. And then have him drop a letter, and then we'd go back and forth, go over it, go over the letter with. Or the agreement, whatever you want to call it.
Susan?
I just wanted to run the.
Hello?
Is there a way, since you're closer to the mic, you can summarize what he just said? And explain to me what we're doing with a lawyer with this property?
Mm-hmm, we're going to meet with the lawyer to discuss and pray. Go ahead, yeah.
Nate, can you hear me now? Can't still hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, basically, we meet with the attorneys to write up a contract that we're, once we do the bore samples, we own the bore samples, is so that we would only have the rights to it, and if we can't make an agreement, that we still would own it, in other words, that Mr. Savage couldn't take the bore samples and then try to sell it to another, another potential buyer. And it'd be a timeframe on how fast we would come up with an agreement. Even if the bore samples weren't good, we would still retain them unless he wants to buy them from us.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Yep.
So, you want to start that meeting, or do you want me to start the meeting?
I think I've got to quick with Russ, but I didn't, I think. Russ has got so much to do, I think if you and I just talk to him, we can. Thank you.
Caught up on the minute, Russ?
Yep.
New business, year-end budgets question.
In your packet, you have the financials to date. We only have one more meeting after this one to get all the facts together. Right now, we are internally moving monies, such as the equipment fund, the bridge fund, the mandate loan monies, et cetera. We have, still have to get those all situated, and for the next meeting, we'll have a good shot at explaining how much revenue or deficit we will carry over. Looks to be all in surplus.
Russ, every year we discuss a new increase in property tax, and I didn't bring the, I didn't bring the last year's, because we always get criticized, we only put in 20,000, but it is the gap. Is this 165,000 that we collected on the increase of property tax, is that up from the last few years, or is that in line?
Yeah, it's a lot this year.
It's a lot more than what we normally get.
Yes, we carried over a lot from last year, working with people with contracts, and that's why you're seeing that number up.
No, it's good, it's seen a lot higher than what I normally see. We used to put zero.
And you used to put zero, but then.
You're only criticized.
Couple years ago.
Yeah, but maybe, we've always, now we have some history, maybe we want to up that volume, a little bit of history.
Next year's going to be an interesting year because of COVID-19.
Year-end total summary estimate, what is that? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what we're talking about. This is the document, here's, so you can look at it, and next meeting, we'll hone it in a lot more. Year-end monies will all be, have come in, and. Talk about.
Anything else on that? Weight discussion FY '21.
Again, you only have one more meeting to declare, like you always do in Zoom. I can do some of the estimates that were readily available on the internet. Kevin, if you could do your federal glance, that would be it.
Yeah, and obviously this year, definitely in the next few months, Bureau of Labor Statistics is pointing to perhaps a 0.8 of 1% of social security collectible investment in 2021. Can everyone hear me online, I hope? That adjustment would be substantially lower if it comes to that, and the 1.6 increase in retirees or in their monthly checks. This is as of April 22nd, and it's still not fully vetted with disparate impact caused by the COVID-19 crisis. Hope that's a little helpful, if we had.
I don't know if I can hear about any from you, Russ, that, you know, we go to the cost of living increase every year, but I'm assuming that there are some merit increases that are given to.
Truly, the only merit increases that we give is to the road crew as they develop into more mature drivers with different classes, different skill levels. So that's the merit that we, we do.
Right, so here, figuring the budget, is that, bunch that into the road crew wages?
Yes. Yes, so we don't overspend, we.
Right.
We have, we have a good knowledge of who's working their way up the chain. We had a very, very young group this last past year. This year, they're doing very well and improving their skills.
Anything you could, what would you want to add?
I didn't hear that.
How many merit increases you've given before, because you know? Wyndham County Sheriff's contract.
Hey, Russ, I remember this whole thing where we had a discussion, I thought the contract was, they never hit their hours, that they would only be paid for the hours they did. And one reason this contract, doesn't sound like Sheriff, the contract's that way. It sounds like they're just going to pay X amount of dollars and they hope to do. I thought what we originally agreed with, if they want to do thirty-eight hours a week, if they want to fill you every quarter, why couldn't be, if they only work twenty-eight, they only get paid for the twenty-eight, they don't get paid for the thirty.
There was a sentence in last year's contract that we added, and it was under compensation two D, and it said, "The office will invoice the town once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below one thousand dollars at the rate stated in Section 2C." And what we did is, we monitored that, and why it's not in this contract is because this contract is including forty hours of secondary coverage from the Putney officer. So our forty hours will be, and then some. So we're going to get?
I'm not disagreeing with you. You've been down this road before, but they didn't come back. I'm just trying to see, there's nothing in this verbage that says that if they didn't do those hours, they're still not going to pay, they're still going to pay the same dollar.
And as he explained it to me today, I asked about that line item, he stated that you're going to get your forty hours and then some from the two officers every week. That's not going to be an issue as it was in the past. We only have one officer aligned for this, for this town. So that's what the deal was when we, when we voted it in, is that we were going to get that secondary forty hours of coverage. The officers from Putney and Westminster will be offset, so that all of the time will be duplicated.
I don't have a problem ending that, it's just, when you read the verbage, it's basically saying he will get paid back every quarter, no matter what. There's nothing about penalty there, he doesn't reach those hours. This makes it sound, there's no penalties, he doesn't reach those hours.
If there, if there, this becomes an issue, there is, is the clause of termination, and that's in the back. You're always going to say, well, we've only got X amount of hours, we're terminating this contract, and you're rightly so, you've got documentation with the status report every month, but you're already, let's take a bad example.
All of a sudden, he loses an officer or so, and all of a sudden, he's only doing twenty hours a week. He's still going to bill us until we cancel the contract, and by the time he cancels the contract, he still would have to pay them for all those hours. I just thought that we were going to put some agreement that, it could be another quarter later, that, you know, you either make up for it, or the next quarter, they're not going to pay you, but the hours you have. You see what I'm saying? Somewhere, you've got to protect yourself, in case, all of a sudden, the two officers both quit, and yeah, his intention was good, but he doesn't have the help to do it. This contract says, it doesn't matter if there are zero persons there, he's going to get paid. And that's all my only concern, we went down this road before, and they couldn't find people to tell us, you know? And I just think, fine, let's go one quarter at a time. Pay the first quarter, but if they don't catch up, and they're only, and you're thirty hours behind off the quarter, we've got to at least circumvent it next quarter, we're going to deduct a percentage of it. You see what I'm saying? Just the guy that works, rather than have a quarter to get caught up. But that's what we were talking.
And that's what it was last year. This year, he said, stated very clearly that we're getting twice as much coverage, so having not enough coverage for forty hours is not going to happen. The likelihood is.
Why are we having to talk about that number from last year? If it's all going to work out, you're not going to get a bargain. But it's our, it's the insurance for us.
I don't disagree.
So this is the contract that he gave to us?
Yeah.
We have one more meeting.
You have supposedly the first meeting of when you receive this to sign it, which would be this meeting. I would suggest that you add the verbage to it that you want, and I would get ahold of Susan at some point this next week, where we can get that verbage into this contract.
I mean, I'm for what they want to do, so I don't want to be a negative person, but just know, we've been down this road, where all of a sudden, we were paying for service and they didn't have it. And it wasn't their intention, I mean, they've just been finding people to work with. These two people are both, they work, they really do, but if both get up and quit, or get quit, or something like that, I just think, you've got to give the person a break, if they're way behind after quarter, you've got to give them a chance to get caught up. But the next quarter, I want to see that they're.
It's not quarters, it's monthly. So I'll know after the first month whether they're making their, their quarter.
I thought it was payments of eighty-two thousand on this call.
What do you mean by quarter?
Sorry?
What do you mean by quarter?
I didn't say quarter. It's not quarter, it's not made by the quarter, it's made by the month.
Three months, right. So, but that would be different wording that we did last year, we had great suggestions.
I wanted to add something in there that would give them a chance, you know?
So, when I take that section from last year's contract, what does that say? Okay, this is from last year to the current year's contract. Under compensation two D, the office will invoice the town, once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below one thousand dollars at the rate stated in Section 2C.
I know.
Yeah.
It means that if services in a month do not meet its quota, and it's a thousand dollars difference or greater, that we are, he is, is literally cutting it off the next month's payment. We were very close one time this year, and he caught up significantly in the next month, and actually exceeded the, the hour. So we did have that almost kick in. And as I said, I asked him about it today, as I was looking at it, that, you know, that this sentence should have been added in, and he gave us the idea that, hey, it's doubling your hours, it's two different officers, that the chances of both of them going down slim to none, and they would cover, cover each other, so that you'll be guaranteed your forty hours.
Okay. Yeah. And if that happens, it's not hurting them at all, it doesn't have to do anything. There's no disadvantage to them, it's not going to be the forty hours.
I agree. Means, once it's done, we're still on, because that one person now has got to cover two thousand. I mean, you can say great there, too, and helping, because that was all wrong with all that, you know?
So I'd like to put a word in that.
I would, too.
Bobby, what do you think? Kevin? If you agree on that. Woody?
I heard that Russ just moved around. The office.
What are you doing there?
They're going to be paid fifty-one dollars. Eight thousand, forty-one on the monthly pay.
What I just handed out was last year's contract, so if the hour exchange gets four hours in the contract, so that's done. Four hours. So what I need to do, my last year, compare.
I think, I think you need a motion on this, all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I move that we approve the contract and give Russ the authority to sign it on behalf of the board, or we all sign it.
No, it's just one.
Just one.
Typically, it's the chair.
And I, I moved that we signed the agreement for the contract, the law enforcement with the town of Westminster for next year, give the chair of the board the permission to sign on behalf, and that we add that line item D from last year, so it'd be under two D, we would add to the contract.
Very good. That the contract is provided out, that two D, the office will invoice the town, once the balance of the town's deposit for services goes below one thousand, at the rate stated in Section, I think that's two C also, is added to the contract. Your second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. I just have a question about that. When did you guys get a copy of this contract? Tonight?
Right now.
And they were expecting to vote on that tonight, and was it the first time they seen it?
I received it, yeah. I received it about a week ago, when I did the packet. And that's what it states in it, that the first one, we're meeting after receiving.
You got an offer though, that they just seen it tonight?
They got, they got it in their packet before, but it, it again, it wasn't much time.
For the first time, or did they get it in their packet a week ago? That's what I'm.
They got it in their packet.
Yeah, a week ago.
Uh, we waited till Monday, I'm sorry. Yeah, because of, because of respect of the county. No, no, they only had three days.
It was in her pack.
So you just pick up the packet.
I get three days.
Okay, I'm just going to, as a team, I'll, because it sounds like a fight to me, that you guys want me to come in tonight.
No, that's why I raised that question so fast, I had already read it for the last day or so, and I went all through it, and I'm going, I couldn't find it.
It's like a very short, it's like somebody to.
It wouldn't.
Expect you to find out.
Yeah. I read it three or four times, trying to find what I found, but I really didn't want to discuss it to the board.
We've already got a bill for, for Jill Oles, just for your, Fran, or Sue. It's not like.
Then there, I don't have one. All right, moving on to sheriff's contract, executive session, so if contract will matter, is motion going to executive session?
I move that we vote a executive session for contract will matter at the end of the meeting.
Moving to second, who would you like to send off there?
Aye.
Manager's report.
I'm going to place a letter in the Gazette, thank the parties for all the help with this special town meeting, we had a lot of parties, stepped up and really helped us a lot, so that will be in the Gazette. Traps, stickers will be mailed out, June 16th for next year. Alyssa Jonathan has asked about a motion that was made about the mandate loan, and she's questioning the wording. So in your package, I had, I've given you her email and the motion for clarity, I don't ask for it for tonight, but I do ask that you read it and ask questions, and then next meeting, I'll have it as an agenda item, for possible removal. Am I started? Um, yeah, it's, I can get you a copy of that, Fran, if you'd like. Okay. We just, just received information the other day that we are going to be paid back for an overpayment of schools, as declared by the state of Vermont, of ninety-nine thousand thirty dollars of fixed staff expense, and that is a combination of the union elementary school and the adult college and high school, which is a nice, but obviously, we won't see it in just a few years for next year.
That's your technical question. Who's budget gets it back?
The state gives it back, they, they.
But it's going to our budget, or we go back?
It goes into our budget, if we paid them, we overpaid them. Delinquent tax update, I sent out a third letter for two-year delinquent folks, it was eighteen, I had twenty plus or minus, but it's eighteen letters. These folks are, are the ones that have not shown any effort to, to contact me, or get a contract, or work through their, their delinquency. So they got a third letter that states that June 26th is their drop dead date now, and before it goes to legal counsel, as you guys recommended, and tax sale, it is slated around late August, it has not been set by any media, but the third letter was sent out just recently to eighteen folks, and we'll see what happens with that. And that's it. Fourth edition. In your package, you have two letters, the first one from Barry Seamus, she is writing petition to become a member of the planning commission. She's attended one meeting and enjoyed it, and would like to join the board. Just an FYI, we are down two members to a five-member board, so we only have three right now. So an added person is a very welcome idea.
If we appoint this person, don't we have to point to who their fellow?
They can, I can.
If we appoint them, there's two open positions, don't we have to point the person to which position it is?
Yes, I'm not sure, but yeah, probably, and I don't have that first.
Are they always on lunch at first?
They've staggered.
Yeah.
That's correct. That's what I was thinking together.
So I will fill in that, let you know what term she'll be.
I would give her an answer to choose which one she wants, for that one. You know?
I'll be back to touch with you, but I would like a motion to accept her.
I'll second.
Thank you.
We're a team to the planning commission, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That passes.
Got a letter today, over to Frances Renaud. Please consider my willingness to serve on the Westminster Community Improvement Committee. I understand that there are now two persons serving on a three-person committee, hence I am applying to fill the third position. So there's the second one.
I have a motion to appoint Frances Renaud to fill in the Westminster Community Improvement Committee. I'll second.
Moving second, appoint Fran Renaud to the community improvement committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Fran, and we've been talking for a while about having the committee come report to the board, and maybe we can do that in the next couple of meetings to discuss what's happening with that, remember we talked about that?
It's all going to wait for the, the budget here, which we put in July, but.
But we're waiting a lot, we've been talking about that, something keeps coming up, so. It's still time to start having a place to think of what's coming up. Yeah, it's one of the problems, yeah, I agree. A lot of it is going to be, but. Yeah, but the only problem, yeah, I agree. Um, it's a lot of other things here, but. Okay. Other business? No other business. They, the meeting, June twenty-fourth, at six-thirty.
What is your plan for?
Oh, wait, Fran, yes.
I just would like to make a comment about the town website. What is going on with it? Why are we so behind? You cannot go and look at an agenda for a minute for two thousand, two, two thousand twenty. You can't just take it while. It's not on here. I just came here before I came here. It stopped there, but it's not going to stop there. Because this is my neighbor, she worked. No, not the store, I'm talking about the, the development, the, the development.
Development Board, oh, yeah.
Right, right. That is not there, that's what I mean. Very, there's nothing for two thousand twenty. And, uh, the other thing is that, that we had a Saturday, we had a special town meeting outside. And I was told that it was going to be a, an agenda. I hung it all over. I couldn't find the agenda. Then when I got here, I was told by Ally that it was there under town clerk. Why would I look under the town clerks if the agenda was like that?
But you're tired of that meeting.
He's a what?
He's really tired of that meeting. This town meeting, not a slatboard meeting, that's a town meeting. But, yeah. Well, because it was a town meeting. It wasn't a slatboard meeting. It's a town meeting to the town clerk. But, I mean, that's a very good point. We spent money last year to afford that website. Brave it, and turned out to be a pretty poor job in my opinion.
Well, basically, yes, because you have to click on this tab to go to that tab to go to that tab, and it doesn't take somebody updating the website. What about whoever is supposed to be putting the current information in? Who's doing that? Who's supposed to be doing it?
Well, I think Russ's office does that, but you still writing?
Yes, I'm listening though.
Okay. So, and I don't want it all the county to be providing the slatboard agenda and minutes, but there are other commissions and boards. And if that, if she doesn't have time to do that, we need to make more provisions.
It is tough for the website to update, but it is also a work in progress. We did the basics, which meant that we didn't, we don't have the ability right this second to put like a link to a Zoom meeting on it. That is being rectified as we speak. It's taking time. I don't know why it's taking so much time, but it is.
And who's trying to, doesn't take to copy an agenda for the minute and post it? It doesn't take long at all. I used to do that. And then I was told I couldn't do it anymore by press. So, but anyway, it doesn't take long. I've done it.
But, I can't speak to that. But the other thing is, our revenue, the DRE and other commission minutes and agenda on it. Is that what you're talking about, Russ? That's a working project?
Where it's... Yeah. And Fran takes out the main things and the main work, and then we will update the other parts of the website. We often not quitting front page under construction, but it is, it is taking a lot more time than I thought. But we are working on it, and we will get this updated somehow. And do you find, Fran, that that update on the front page, then we can move forward? And this is the same person, the same company?
You don't have a choice as to what minutes and agendas you put up there. You can't say enough. And if Kelly doesn't have time, you have to have somebody else do it, but you can't say the DRE has a meeting and say you have minutes in the agenda. You don't have the right legally to say, oh, we're not putting this up there. It's a town website, and it is steep statute that any public body that has... Public meetings has agenda. I think it's dependent because of this whole pandemic, and I don't know the timeframe, but it used to be five days. And so if there's a problem with timing and somebody's got too much work to do, you don't have the luxury of saying that person will come by. You guys are going to get yourselves with this public meeting stuff into some big trouble if it's not on. Because people are starting to pay attention. And I, and it's really, it's, it's really, and you know how it's really frustrating, but you don't have the luxury of saying we're not doing it.
Right. I was planning to say there are plenty of people who are talking in the background who are really upset with not, with feeling like their purpose is being left out.
Because...
Because things are not covered.
Because they can't find the agenda and the minutes in the website, because the website is hard to navigate.
Well, I don't know exactly what they're, what they're, they're not saying why.
Yeah.
They're saying they're really upset for the kids.
Yeah. Okay.
You can put the link, they dropped it that whole time. Everything they must do is with folder. They dropped there.
You can use a folder?
Yeah, with folders or in...
Right, right.
You can put the link to the proper page with the folder stuff.
Right. So none of the DRB minutes are on the agenda or on the website at all?
Not at all.
But they have been, but haven't been updated for this year or something? I don't...
To find the date and time of this meeting, you have to go to the slatboard, you have to go to last month's minutes to find it. It's not... So if you want to know what this meeting is, you need to go through last month's minutes to find out.
Uh, I don't know. My finger took it again.
Well, you're on by the...
So it's not on the front page at all? It's not on the front page. Once it posts it. Once it's actually posted, it's not posted for the big... You would think that once we leave this meeting, we've already decided the next meeting is going to be this date, this time, that it would only take a change to get it back onto that website. You know, the minute is...
We'd not have the agenda yet.
Right. Not the agenda, not the, not the, at least, you know, front page or where it really hit. June 27th at 6:30, that's what the board voted would be the next meeting. And where? And where? Is that it?
I just want to go back to the comment that was made about the town meeting and not being able to find that. I called and asked for that. I agree that Ally has to run that meeting, that it's her checklist. You know, she's got to check list. I do not agree that it's her meeting to have it under her. You want to put it there too, but it's our turn. It was our town meeting. And I did ask for that to happen, and was told that get back to me and I can pick up.
So, and how do you tell, have the citizens of Westminster know they have to go from their ally's page or their ally's whatever to find it? Because they think of it as being out of the towns with the slatboard meeting. I don't know. I don't think it's the website. I think it's putting stuff on what's, that's what I'm looking for.
Would you?
I would think that you make together a nerd committee, say that somebody, people who really know how to make this function. Somebody order to have one of those slatboard members part of the committee to do it, just make it up. I don't know. There's a lot of this communication. You know, I'm saying that just maybe for getting reverberation to the floor. People that know like con... You can't, what people are saying, to get it up. And I realize we're in a hard situation, but something sort of to change the way that we should have a meeting.
Did you call it a nerd committee or what?
Yeah, I, I, I agree importantly. I'll never, depending on the outside, sometimes I can see a few things together, but I have no idea.
I can deal with that.
Well, we're, we're different times, because normally, y'all always know what's going to be at that building at 6:30. You saw that calendar. But with this going on, you're right, a lot of people are going to be looking to seek for, where is it this time, you know? And I would say, yeah, we're in more, more information on our website than ever.
What?
If somebody... No idea what it is.
So you're going to be... No, I'm... Anything else? Okay.
Have somebody do this quickly, make sure that it's...
Why not?
Trying to get this whole thing straightened out. And all I know, the other point is, get somebody to explain exactly how to do it. Get that thing up this week long before this public meeting. Because I'm watching, from the outside, watching the video, it's really, doesn't... As far as I know, it would be probably up in the slatboard to send out the...
So you didn't stop the link?
The instruction. It's up in the slatboard links to that technical, hard, long, simple time. And be noted on any framework. I do know it should be a function. Not the whole...
I mean, I don't know how it works, but it was actually easier when we all go through, because we're all in a different room. We're all looking at each other. This is the most, this is the hardest combination of having the open meeting, because I'm sure who's ever on that computer never heard a word you just said. You know what I'm saying? Whereas the other meetings, we're all sitting, you know, six inches from the computer, and they can see us all. But this is the best way to accommodate both. It's just, this is not a good environment.
Why not have, make sure that there's a microphone up here?
Well, like I said, every meeting, we try to present.
Hello? Hello? Yeah, this is Alex Stravlin from Fact TV. I just want to interject. Yeah, I mean, the large spaces, it's tough to mic. I mean, the thing that's going to make it better for next time, and it's going to require more setup, is having table mics and miking up different areas of the fire station. But I'm kind of, I'm probably going to have to charge you guys more because 100 bucks instead of 50 bucks, because it requires more setup, a little bit more, you know, a little bit more time to get it done correctly. Or we PA the meeting, have a PA system for people that are speaking in the meeting. The problem with Zoom is it applies a lot of noise reduction. So anyone that's further away, it assumes that it's just background noise, and then it just takes it down. So we need to get mics closer to people for the next time around. And I'm willing to talk with Russ and get this taken care of. It's just a little tough with larger spaces and requires more setup.
Yeah.
That's all. Okay?
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify for you. I apologize for the sound, but we are trying to figure this out. Okay?
I, I think, if I may interject, I think a space with much better acoustical value might be much better than a 2,000-square-foot room with 18-foot ceilings. That's going to help.
You're correct on that. There's also, the door is open, so any background noise, lawnmower or car, utter space. Zoom is automatically going to take down the audio to adjust for that. So, yeah, it just requires a little bit more time, a little bit more setup, just to clarify for you folks. Okay?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, the advantage of this space is it's practically outdoors, so presumably, it's safer, but, you know.
Yeah.
If I could interject, it's Alice.
I, I...
I also noticed that when members of the audience speak through their masks, it is less audible than when you pull the mask down. So I think that they have a lot to do with us being able to hear.
Yeah. Thank you. That's for sure.
It's all, it's all a part of the problem.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're further away from the mic, and we really need more mics for the next meeting. Unfortunately, you know, they're, they're too far away from the single mic. So I mean, we'll, we'll take care of that. It just requires more setup, unfortunately. The actual recorded version will have better audio clarity, because there's no noise reduction being applied to it. Zoom automatically applies this noise reduction, and that's the problem. That's the main problem. So the, the recorded version will be better for people to hear.
Thank you. We can, but then people who don't have a computer...
We were trying to solve the problem with Zoom. We were all, we never needed a board, so we can't have immediately five people at the board meeting. This way we could. Because we go to back to Zoom, it's like we all sit home, and there's no, there's no place. So we thought this may be the best combination we could work it out, because people that don't feel comfortable can do Zoom, but the people who want to actually come and listen and talk, come. We just need to work. We need to get it much better.
What if, what if you all brought your laptops here?
Just so you have a laptop, you have a laptop, you have a laptop, you're all on it. Everybody can hear you. We can hear you.
I'm not American. Yeah, I'm... Much be glad.
I think when you were getting that, you were on Zoom. It's really very bad. I mean, yeah.
I just might be able to take it.
But we always, when we had the Fact TV, we always had a mic at each table before, before.
I would just say pay in Fact TV to help me figure this out. If you watch, I don't know if you guys watch any other board meeting meetings in this area on Fact TV. They're somehow looking at without all of this audience being upset that they're not able to... So they're doing something different. As far as I know, I mean...
Do you know how many of them are particularly sick of it?
About twelve or more, I think. Yeah, I don't, it's hard for me to know. I don't know if anybody, I'm not participating, I'm watching them live on Fact TV. I don't know what, maybe nobody's watching. I don't presume. I don't know.
Anything else? Yeah, they've done a great job. We appreciate it very much. Special meeting and everything you've done. Yeah. Hey, we're going to go into...
Well, we're discussing the next meeting. Now, we want to actually, I think, at least we ought to get it out, like they said that. The next meeting, we were, at this meeting, we approved that we're going to be June 24th here, I guess, and then we'll do a combination of Zoom and, I just, I think, at least if we leave and we all agree how we're going to do it, give more time for us, give information, help the people, how we're going to hold our next slatboard meeting.
Another program on Zoom, I know on, on Facebook, you can go to chat and have four or five people, and it all communicate. Because I do it with my kids.
But, there is, but, I mean, Zoom, the way we were doing it, we're just trying to figure out how to have the open meetings. Just like if we, we have an executive session for the board to discuss anything, really hard to ever do with Zoom.
Well, I would, I would suggest follow Cynthia's suggestion about other towns that are not having problems. Break down and call them and ask for some advice.
And I'm assuming Alex is the one that's helping on that Fact TV, so he probably knows, but...
I don't know. Want to have it here then?
Well, you know, I think the problem with this thing working is seriously a problem for audio.
Oh, yeah. There's no doubt about it. It's big and it's eerie.
So what's the reason why we couldn't have it in that room? Other than, other than it can only be 25% capacity, but we can't get close to that in most of these meetings, I think.
But we could have, what is the capacity of fire...
Let's just warn it, at least we're here.
Yeah.
And that's the best thing why we put in there. The sound is much better. It's a lot quieter. We can leave these doors open, maybe, so technically, it's still open meeting. At least in there, the ceiling is low, the sound is better, and we could set it up for them with the mics. It'd be much better.
So...
Right. Just leave the doors open. So if somebody wants to stand out here, they can. There's too many people.
What are they going to set up in the case of school, but... But they wouldn't, you mean, the night before? Is that what you're saying?
They're out here. Also.
They're out here? Why would that prevent us from having a meeting?
So at least we can warn it. It's going to be built in, we're in the building. Let's get Russ to check it out.
Are you going to be voting on anything after we come out to Fact TV session?
I doubt it, but... Yeah, no. Well, you know, actually...
Is this the one we get for, huh?
Actually, we're going to have to put it off because Sheldon...
Like you say, if this is the one, the one star without Sheldon...
Yeah.
We have to be so secretive about what the contract is. You're not discussing the contract in front of us.
I'm not sure. We never had any discussion. I hadn't, I wasn't talking about...
But I don't have to, but I like your contract.
But that's what it is. I wasn't sure about it.
Um, yeah.
Tell me if you're in contact. Okay.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't do the agenda. I didn't do the agenda. I assumed that's what it was, but I'm... Right. But sometimes things come up during that I don't know about.
So you're still going to go into executive session, though, even though Sheldon's not here?
Yeah, I'm going to go pay for it, because Sheldon has information that we need for...
Okay. I don't need to know anymore. I'm just curious what was going to happen.
Well, I want you to answer the question of... That was the same thing. No, we can, I, I make a motion that we don't go, we don't enter into the executive session.
The executive, the don't, the executive, that's all in favor? I oppose. No. Hopefully, we'll have the information. Okay. Do you want to move to adjourn the meeting, someone? Move to the second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor? I oppose. Thank you all. Thanks for coming.